Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 7th, 2020 meeting of the Select Board. We're going to try to talk fast because just had a
You did turn that on.
decent storm. Hang on, my mic is not on here. We just had a pretty decent storm roll through and there's some power issues in town, so we want to make sure we get through the agenda before we potentially lose power. What do I do about this?
It's coming from that laptop. Sounds like it's coming from that one.
So we have an echo, just bear with us. Okay, perfect. Thank you, John. So I'm actually not even going to waste time reading the public forum policy tonight. And we might take some of our agenda items a little bit out of order in just to make sure that certain people are allowed to leave sooner than others. So we're going to skip the COVID update for now. Oh, we should do the minutes. Let's do the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from September 28th and the Board of Selectmen executive session meetings from September 28th.
I second that.
A motion's made in second. Is there any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 22nd, September 8th, and July 29th as presented.
Second half.
There's a motion made in second. Is there any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, so we got that done. Okay, so next we have the appointments. Marlene?
Yes, so we have a couple of vacancies. Bob Wagner on the Community Preservation Committee. Bob Wagner has represented the Planning Board as the representative to CPC. And he is stepping aside as the Planning Board representative. The Planning Board this evening is meeting and will take up designating a Planning Board rep to CPC. And it is expected that Stephanie Slisch will be that representative from the Planning Board. In the meantime, the Board of Selectmen at-large position for CPC is vacant as a result of John Wilkes. He was the at-large. He's now on the Housing Authority representative. Bob Wagner has expressed interest in being appointed as the at-large.
So he's just switching from
He's shifting, yeah. Just shifting.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Wagner as a Select Board at-large representative on CPC.
Yeah, I'll second that. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, Bob's really great on that committee and every committee that he's on. So there's a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll make the motion to appoint Steph Slisch
Pending the Planning Boards.
Yeah, to Steph Slisch pending the outcome of the Planning Board meeting tonight as the serving on the as a representative to CPC from the Planning Board. I think I said that right?
I second that.
Okay, so there's a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
I just want to add that I think Stephanie will be great on there, so I'm really happy about this.
Yeah, I would agree.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there somebody on this line? Background noise.
There's somebody who's not muted, but they're going to it's being taken care of. And so we have one more. Lydia, did you want to speak to this appointment of an election worker?
I didn't find my microphone. Yes, actually, she's reconsidered. You can appoint her. I can put her on the list, but she may not be working until next year.
What difference does it matter? I mean
No.
Okay. So I'm assuming because it was given to us, you'd like us to make the appointment?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think it's cheaper on the list.
Okay.
And is it pronounced N-I-E-D?
Need.
Need? Okay, sorry. My apologies. I'll make the motion to appoint Mary Need to serve at the Town of Hatfield as a poll worker.
Second.
An election worker.
Yeah, right. Because now they're doing a lot more than just working at the poll.
Yeah.
Election, okay.
Okay.
As an election worker rather than a poll worker.
Second.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. So there's a motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we thank her for doing that. Okay, so we have a financial update. Marlene, anything?
Yes, I'd just like to report that we are the town is moving ahead with the fiscal year 20 audit. Offices are submitting the requested documents from the auditor. And so we're loading them to a site that they have set up. And we'll actually begin the audit next week. And in the meantime, the accountant is submitting reports, end-of-the-year reports for FY '20 to the Division of Local Services and Gateway. Those are reports that are loaded as well, so that is in the process. And I'd just like to say that, you know, I all of us are very grateful for this. We haven't seen, you know, these reports submitted so timely in years. So things are going very well.
That's really terrific, and we're grateful to all of you here within the building that are keeping everything on track as well.
Yep.
So thank you. Sharon's on the computer and you're here, and we appreciate it.
Karen, did you want to add anything?
Nope, just sorry I wasn't muted before, but we're on track. So glory's coming tomorrow and half the stuff's already up to the auditor, so we're in good shape.
Excellent. That's what we like to hear. Thank you very much. Ed, did you want to add anything to that?
I think it's great. This is the first time since I've been on the board that we've actually doing it in October, and I think it's finally fantastic. We made a touchdown.
Yeah.
Right. I would agree.
Excellent. Okay, you're good.
I'm good. Again, I just echo everybody else's sentiments and thank everyone for their hard work in getting us where we need to be. So thank you.
So our next item, we are joined tonight by our DPW Director Phil Genovese to talk about the contract award for the Route 5 water sewer improvement project, Phase 1 of that project. So the project went to bid?
Yes. As you received the letter from our consulting engineers, Comprehensive Environmental, who their recommendation is, and surely it's up to the Board to award the contract, so.
So the obviously, we have to take the most qualified the lowest most qualified bidder. This letter does recommend the low bidder, which was Gilaher. And I honestly have a problem with awarding it to Gilaher. There's been a number of projects over the years that I don't think have been done great here in town by Gilaher, but most recently the Chestnut Street project, which was a disaster. And my feeling is, this is a big project. It's an important project. It's on 5 and 10. I don't want to get into it being left a mess overnight, left a mess on weekends. We just can't have that. So I would like to consider actually going with the next bid. And you showed me a figure
Yes, the next Well, the next bid under Gilaher was Ludlow Construction, who has well worked has worked in a town on the water project.
Right.
There was no issues there. And they're $25,919.60.
Okay. So I mean, a $25,000 difference between the bids on a two-plus-million-dollar project to me. And I think I think for the peace of mind that we're not going to have problems out there and delays out there and a huge mess. In my opinion, it's well worth to actually award to the next one, which is Ludlow Construction. And again, a company with a better track record here in town and on state projects.
So the only thing that I would like to comment on is that, you know, if there's problems on Route 5, you know that the phone calls are coming to the town. They're not going to the state where everybody thinks they might go. They're coming to the town because it's a town project. So it's going to be us. And I stress that to the engineers, that whoever the contractor is has to provide a clean site, contact information, because we're not chasing everybody around like we previously did. So whoever the contractor award, that is going to be part of the pre-construction meeting that we will have. The only thing that I think that I think that CEI would have to qualify the next bidder. Am I correct?
They would, yeah, absolutely.
So but to your point, you're right, that we get the calls about the project, not the state. However, we could also get calls from the state
Oh, absolutely.
about the condition of this project.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I think the last thing we want to do is, you know, have problems with Mass DOT out there, so.
No, we don't want no problems with Mass DOT.
I don't think that this is going to be very difficult for CEI to
No.
make this
No, but I'm just thinking I'm just talking about the steps.
Right, the process to qualify Yeah, to qualify the contractor is not not a difficult task to do that.
Yeah, I just I don't want to have another situation like Chestnut. It was a mess.
And nor do I.
Yeah, I know. It was really and the people out there, I felt really bad for them for a really long time. And we don't want to get into that's a very heavily traveled road, 5 and 10. And this project needs to be
And right now, we have a very good rapport with the state as far as that road goes. If there's a water break, which happens every year there, that, you know, they are very cooperative with us
Yep.
because of the conditions. So we don't want to muddy up that rapport that we have.
No, and, you know, it's a it's a public safety issue, too. If the road's not left in good shape with that number of cars traveling over it and everything else. So to me, this is a no-brainer for $25,000 to get Ludlow Construction in instead of Gilaher. But that's just my opinion. I, you know, certainly want to hear from
I just want to say, I want to make sure if if we go forth with this, there's no legal implications, because we have a document here saying that they're qualified. And we need to have documentation to say why we're not going to give them that contract. So I think we if we're going to check with CEI, I think we should also check with legal to see what are our steps, so that we don't get into a lawsuit or anything like that. That's all.
Well, and do we have does the town have documentation of concerns or issues with this previous regarding previous projects with this contractor?
I mean, it's been phone calls. I mean, it's nothing in writing about the conditions on Chestnut Street, but it's been even today, there was phone calls. I had to call Ryan Gilaher today to go and fix the little patch that he never did, so.
Yeah, it's still it's still not great.
I think that we've all been getting phone calls. And I can't speak for Diana or Ed, other than
For sure.
Other than I think we've all mentioned it in the past, like Phil, what's the status on Chestnut Street? Because I got some more calls.
And I travel it all the time, so I was well aware of
You know, and there was complaints filed, you know, from residents there where they left a mess in the front yards that we we had to personally go clean up, so.
I'm not disputing the fact that I understand the issues there, because I travel there, too. I just want to make sure that we're on legal footing, that's all. I just want to ensure we're I mean, we know that that project on Chestnut Street was was terrible. It was it was bad, which is, I understand. I have no problem going with the next bidder. I just want to make sure we have the legal footing to do it. That's all. So if we're going to check with CEI, we can also check with our legal and see if we can move ahead that direction. That's all.
Yeah, and we're not talking a huge difference in price here. So let's try to make this happen and not use Gilaher for this. That's my opinion.
So
And and, sorry?
Nope, go ahead.
On projects, particularly where we start having a pattern of complaints and a pattern of problems, we need to start documenting this stuff. That's really important, so that, you know.
I just want to echo, I guess, what Diana and Ed and Phil have said, which is, you know, anybody can have sort of a bad day or a crew that left something where they shouldn't. But this this went on for a very long and still going on for a very long time on Chestnut Street. We know that other companies have also worked in town and done jobs and maybe had an issue here and there, but not not a stream or not a string of complaints and issues coming in. The next bidder up or the next lowest bid also I did a little checking, has a track record with the state. And they're going to be as we've also said, they're going to be on Route 5 and 10. So I think that while we ultimately make the decision, I would think that the state, who we'll be dealing with quite often, will feel comfortable not that they wouldn't with the other vendor, by the way, but, you know, when you know that you've got somebody with a track record who's also done work in Hatfield and done a fine job. So I mean, you know, I I agree. I have no problem with going with Ludlow Construction as the next lowest bidder. While it's a little bit more money, it all these bids were under
Right.
were under the estimate that we thought we would where they would come in at. But I do agree with Ed also that we just want to make sure that we're, you know, agreeing to all the all the rules and regulations with the bidding process.
Because we may be required to have documentation, something written down of why we feel we're not going to award this bid to the lowest bidder. That's all. We're going to probably need something. And I say also that we move along with this as fast as we can get it checked. And even if we have to come back here next week and on this one particular item, so we can get the contract moving, so we don't upset the Mass grant schedule.
Or interrupt the schedule.
I mean
You can vote on it.
I can't imagine that there isn't a way to select the second you know I mean, even based there's got to be times where you have projects like this where even based on reputation, even if there's no prior work in your community, that bidders are disqualified based on that sort of thing. So I'm not worried about it. We need to make sure we do it. And we should be documenting these things. And it's not just the Chestnut Street project that has not been really terrific by Gilaher. So there's a pattern with them. So that's my two cents on it. So do we take a vote? Or do we have to wait until we check this out?
I would think well, I would defer to Marlene, but I would think we could take a vote in in the motion based upon
Subject
subject
Subject to them qualifying and
Right, yeah, something
and pending any legal
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Do we do we need to plug the dollar amount in for Ludlow?
Yeah, for the bid amount what their bid amount is.
So what is the what is the
I got it right here. I got it. I'll make a motion to appoint Ludlow Construction to complete the West Street sewer extension for the cost of $2,221,679.60 based on the subject to the findings of
Qualifications.
CEI as the engineering firm and legal counsel.
And I want to point out, I believe even that bid is still within what the estimate was. It's still under what the original estimate is, so we're not we're not voting to spend any more money at this time. I don't know how Phase 2 comes in, but as far as Phase 1's concerned, we're under the original estimate, even by going with the next
Yes.
higher bidder.
The original estimate, just for the town
So I just want people to know that, too.
Just for the townspeople, the original estimate was $2.8 million with a 15% contingency built into it. And with CEI and myself going back and forth with the waiver for Route 5 to do away with the flowable fill and to do straight compaction, it was a savings of over $300,000. So that's why the price is so low.
Good job.
Well, came in that low.
Yep.
Okay. So did you second the motion?
I will second what Brian said, that we're going to check with our legal and CEI to confirm. And I do agree that, you know, they that the low bidder did do some horrendous work for the town we're not happy with. And we think at this point, we feel we have the right to award to the next lower bidder. And also, it's not going to cost the town any more money, because we're still under the bid. So I will agree to all that, how that sounds.
Okay. So motion made in second. We already had quite a bit of further discussion. Everybody set?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, thanks. And good job, you and Michael and CEI getting that.
Good luck out there tonight.
Yep.
And the only only one other thing was, I think it was mentioned, you can correct me for the town, that when they start the project, they're going to have a a clerk or a manager out there to be full-time to make sure the installation is is up to everything that was called for, correct?
Under Comprehensive Environmental's Engineering, they will be have someone on-site.
Okay.
You know, that was, you know, pushed forth by the town as well as myself with the location of where we'll be working, so.
Okay.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Because I think the town
Probably wise.
A project this cost, I think the town wants to have some insurance that somebody's watching it.
Yeah, and in this location. You're totally right.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Perfect. Phil, thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Thank you.
Carrie, were you here for COVID-19?
Yeah, but we're she said to go last.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you say that.
In case I'm the least important person, the rest of your stuff is
Okay.
Oh, come on, CQ.
No, CQ.
Right.
So Marlene, is this you? Mass Works grant, COVID-19 funding and
I'm just quickly reporting that all three of these
It's now exiting.
So Mass Works, that was a quarterly report due the end of the month. All these were due the end of the month. Mass Works grant, COVID-19 funding, the money that was disbursed to the town for the $29,000, which we had estimated for FY '20. So we actually expended close to $16,000 of that $29,000. Again, that $29,000 was an estimate. We had anticipated the nurses being here for the month of July, so that did not occur. However, we are incurring, you know, a significant amount of expenses for '21, and I will be submitting that application. I'm going to coordinate efforts with the fire chief regarding
Okay.
those expenses. And yeah, so we very well could use up that, the rest of it.
I'm sure. So, well, thank you, and thanks to Chief Flaherty as well.
Oh, and the municipality vulnerability plan update was submitted as well. We haven't made too much progress because of COVID-19. We do have three workshops coming up to this month and one next month, so.
And we we're okay if we go to one of those workshops?
Well, it's helpful if there's one representative, if they can be at all three workshops, but, you know, we'll certainly take whatever.
Okay.
If someone's only able to make one or two, that's very helpful
Okay.
and appreciated.
Next is special town meeting?
Yes, so we talked about this at our last meeting, and as we know
I missed I missed something. The license fees.
Oh, that's right. I missed that, too.
So this was we talked, you know, about possibly considering a reduction to the licensing fees for the you know, the alcoholic beverage and food establishments
Mm-hmm.
given that, you know, they were closed. And even when they opened, their capacity has been severely cut back. It just especially, you know, the bars and clubs, I mean, they can't even they can't even open, and we're going to charge them for a license that they also won't be able to use until who knows when.
That's right.
So I'm open to I'm open to anything really that's supportive of them, right up to deferring not not charging at all for the coming year licenses.
I'm sure.
Yes.
So I've been giving this a lot of thought since our last meeting, and of course, there's been articles in the newspaper also about other communities having the same type of conversation. And so I appreciate Key and Marlene putting the numbers together for us.
What I put out there tonight was an update
Yes.
an updated spreadsheet.
Thank you. And so the spreadsheet that we were provided showed it showed what the potential revenue was for 2021, which would be $14,000 with all of the licenses, all of the food and alcoholic beverage licenses combined. Did I say that right, Marlene? Or is that that was 2020?
That was 2020.
2020, sorry.
And that's what it would be, right.
So that's what it would be if we didn't increase. So and then, you know, I was talking I was thinking about, well, do we divide it by 12
Right.
as was recommended? And then try to figure out how many months they were open or weren't open or weren't able to open?
Yeah.
And it's only it's only October.
Yeah.
This kind of started in March.
Right.
Having gone back and forth and figured 50%, 112, whatever
Yeah.
for me, I would just as soon waive all the charges for next year for all the food and and the bar licenses, because I think these businesses are all even the ones that are open are struggling. Winter's coming, so anybody with outdoor facilities is going to lose those. The restaurant capacity, you know, carries here, but it's reduced for sure. And if there's any sort of an outbreak, they're they're going to get hammered again.
Right.
So $14,000 to our town of a $12 million budget, I feel, is worth for our friends, neighbors, and businesses who employ some of our folks here. And we do get some of the tax revenue. To me, I would just as soon waive all of it for 2021. I think that's the fairest way. Personally, I think that's the fairest way, and it's not a big hit to the town of Hatfield's budget. So that would be that would be my recommendation. I don't know if you want
I
in the form of a motion yet, or we can have more discussion.
I'd just like to add something.
Yeah, sure.
So I just wanted to add that $14,000, looking at the spreadsheet so that is just based on the alcohol licenses and the entertainment license and auto amusement based on the alcohol licenses and the entertainment license and auto amusement licenses that the Board of Selectman issue. We did include the cost for food license, but that falls under the Board of Health. The Board of Health issues those permits, so I thought it really probably should come from the Board of Health.
They're elected, so they have to make their own decision about their license fees.
Right, right. So that $14,000 does not include the revenues for the food permits.
All right.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Right, I understand. And there is a distinction for me, too, between the package stores and the wine and malt package stores, which were able to function.
Right.
Correct.
At full capacity and may have done very well, actually, with that. It's not that we don't want to support them, but we're trying to support the businesses that we don't want to lose.
Right.
Right? We want to, we want to make sure that we maintain these businesses in town, because they are our friends and neighbors. Like Brian said, they do employ everybody. And it would be really short sighted to say, well, we don't want to forego this money in 2021, and then we have to forego it because the businesses are closed in 2022. So I...
I would also add that these businesses through the years have been very supportive of our students and our schools and our town as a whole. I mean, you know, there's been raffles, there's been awards from some of them for perfect attendance. I mean, you know, with my time on the school committee, I got to see lots of things that these restaurants and bars did just for the schools, for the kids, never mind what they do for other, for other parts of the community, so.
And these, they're bringing people from other towns here to eat. I mean, and I, you know, I specifically, you know, I'm concerned, you know, the Wax Wing had just opened when they went into the shutdown. They're very small inside, so I'm a little worried when the outdoor seating goes away. I want them to be okay. I want them to stay in town and be a healthy business. And so I think...
The changes in the guideline, just from a COVID perspective, just so people know, it's not changing anytime soon.
No.
So, I mean, we're going to probably go into the new year that these restaurants are still going to be held to those standards, and like you said, they're not going to have the outside seating unless they were able to somehow set up, like, heating. I know that at Fish Tales, they've dropped the sides of the tent down, but I don't know how long that's going to hold out for, because you can't really put heaters underneath those things that well. So.
Right.
I know they're trying their best, and so they're going to only have their indoor seating. So it's, I think it's great that you guys are considering it, and I think there isn't anybody in town that would ever say that you guys are wrong for doing that, because this is going to go into next year, and these places aren't opening anytime in the near future. So it's nice that they don't have to worry about paying a bill in next two months.
Yeah, and it's, it's, how can I say it? It's a lot of money for the individual business to have to pay, but it's short money, is that the right term, on our end, really, as I see it.
It is, it's short sighted to do this, because...
And most of them have been closed since March.
Yeah.
So you're looking at, even if they do open in February, you're talking that many months, so whatever, nine months that they already have paid for this year, that they didn't get to function. So truthfully, they're getting it for next year. I think it's great. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I agree, because out of the eight businesses, three have never opened since March.
Right.
You have one that opened and now has closed, and you have one that has been open. I mean, you only have a couple that have, they've been working at a limited capacity, even though they opened.
Right.
Yeah, and then, and then there's one, and I'm referring to the Wax Wing, that I'm a little worried about when the outdoor seating goes away, because the inside is pretty small. So I just think that it's the right thing to do, and it's a, I think it's a really meaningful gesture we can make to the businesses here that we treasure.
Okay, you want to repeat that, what you...
So, yeah, so I'll make a motion to waive the 2021 fees for alcoholic beverage licenses, entertainment license fees, and the auto amusement license fee. And I left out the food, because that's really under the Board of Health. Is that right, Marlene?
That is correct.
So, so those three, I was on one of the things we got. So those are the categories.
So does that, so are you suggesting the package stores are included in that?
I was not. I'm trying to.
No, they're not included.
Okay.
No. The restaurants and bars is...
Actually, I've been told that the package store sales are up.
Yes, that's what I was, yeah.
That's right. So we will require those package stores.
And I would say, quite honestly, if those stores were also impacted, I would have no problem including them in this, but they haven't been.
I'm assuming they haven't been, and they, you know.
Right.
Okay, I think that's the right thing to do.
I would like to say, I just want to abstain from two of them, because I'm a member of the Legion and the Polish Club, so I'm willing to do all of them except those two, as far as a motion and a vote. I just want to abstain from two of them.
So I literally joined the Legion, not the Legion, I literally joined the Polish Club about five seconds before it shut down. I never even stepped foot in there, so I think I'm technically on the rolls as a member, but I...
I would...
I mean, I don't have a financial interest in it.
Lydia is here with us if we need clarification, but I would say, given the circumstances... What?
No. No. Officially a member. But even if you have that, you don't have a financial interest in it.
Right. And it's the rules and necessity. So we can't, we can't not vote for it, so...
It's the rule and necessity.
Right, okay.
You can second it, at least.
I will second it, yeah.
And I can vote on it now, so I don't have a financial interest in either one of them, so.
Okay.
I'll vote with, I'll vote, I'll take back what I said. I'll vote now, okay.
You'll second it?
Now that we have a ruling, I'll second it, yes.
Okay, so motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
No. Good luck to all those businesses.
I. Marlene, if we could let them know this as soon as possible.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, and again, I think it's just really important to thank them for doing what they're doing, and some of them have made some changes and doing different things to keep themselves going, and it's really impressive, and we're really grateful for that. And I would also, I would urge the Board of Health to consider doing the same thing from their food license perspective, so maybe we could email them that the Select Board has done this, and ask that they consider following suit, so that we can be as supportive as possible.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Could I just add one thing while we're talking about businesses, and perhaps I was, I was going to actually make it under announcements. Speaking of businesses, I just posted to the town's website, and I will be notifying businesses directly, but under the federal COVID relief package, funds that were allocated earlier this year or several months back, there was money allocated for small businesses. And municipals, you may recall, back in the summertime, I had recommended that we join other communities. East Hampton took the lead. Working with PDPC, it's a micro enterprise or small businesses COVID recovery grant, and Hatfield is participating in this. And I posted information to the website today. Hopefully, businesses will see it. But as I said, I will be contacting them directly and providing them with that information. But there are, you know, requirements as far as eligibility requirements.
But there might be some, what you're saying is there could be some funding that they can tap into.
If we can help any of our businesses in Hatfield, yeah, this would be a good opportunity.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you know, if they need assistance or some advice about it. I know with most of those grant programs, and I just know this from my own job, there's usually a lot of support available to, so that people can know if they're qualified, what they can do with it, and all that sort of stuff, so. Great.
Thank you, Marlene.
So we'll revisit the special town meeting, set a date?
Okay. So my understanding from our previous conversation...
We're going to do it on November 3rd, right, Lydia? Sorry.
November 2nd. She won't have anything to do to get ready.
I confirmed today with the engineers, we are still expecting the survey of the properties for this Route 5 project to be completed by November 1st. So we need to be able to put the details of that, those easements into the article for the warrant. So I'm, I was going to suggest that we look at a later date, perhaps either the 14th...
Ever sores.
If it's a Saturday, if it's going to be on a Saturday, then we look at possibly, well, the 21st.
May I ask, is the moderator on board with the Saturday?
The tour. So the moderator, the moderator is away later, possibly later in October.
Yeah.
So November, there shouldn't be any problems.
We have to wait till November anyway for the survey.
Right. But I'm talking about a Saturday in particular. Is the, is the moderator okay with a Saturday?
Saturday meeting.
Versus, versus during the week. I know...
He reached out to Bob and I, because we organized this last one with him, and he did say that...
If we're going to have it outside.
Well, he, here's the thing, we kind of have to have it outside still. Unless between now and November 21st, or whatever you guys pick for a day, if the numbers are increased for inside gatherings, we have to have it outside, because you cannot restrict somebody who's a voter from coming and being on town floor for town meetings. So say the capacity is 75 people, well, if 75, if 80 people show up, you have to let those five other people in. You can't tell them that they have to go away. So he agrees that we can figure out an outside thing, whatever we have to do to make it happen. And with Saturday being that the daylight would be there versus being in the dark at 5 o'clock at night, he did agree, at least at that point. He didn't seem to be against it.
So, right, I understand. We can't turn people away and this and that. My thoughts on the date, we can't do it, if we're expecting the easements, the engineering, or what'd you say, we're...
The first.
The survey?
On the first. I mean, that only, you have to post the meeting.
14 days prior.
So you can't do it the 14th, which puts us at the 21st, which, you're, it's cold, and that is the weekend before Thanksgiving.
It is the weekend before Thanksgiving.
Which means, you know, I don't know that travel plans are going to be quite what they are normally for Thanksgiving, but I don't think we have much choice, because we can't do it the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So in my opinion, it has to be the 21st.
And if we go on the 21st, I think we're also under COVID rules of 25 people, right?
No, we're going to do it outside.
No, we're going to do it outside.
But even if we go outside, in order for a quorum, we're down...
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Under the COVID rules of 25 people.
The quorum requirements under the COVID-19.
The quorum requirements, yeah.
Right. That has not changed.
There's more, there's more, but I'm just saying.
But currently, as long as nothing changes, we can have 100 people outside for a gathering now for the town of Hatfield. Just so everybody knows that.
I don't think we're going to get 100 people.
Nope, I don't think we're going to do that, but just so you know.
But we have to be prepared for that.
And we talked about keeping the warrant to specifically just...
Minimal, because it is going to be, it's going to be cold.
Right.
And, you know, so just things that have to be done.
I mean, just kind of, let's show up, let's call a tour, let's bingo bango, and then we're done.
I would...
Because if we do it in November, our next one's in May, so six months later.
I would suggest maybe like a 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM start time.
Yeah.
Okay.
By the way, that November 1st is when they're going to finish the survey. Doesn't mean we're going to have all the paperwork, right?
Even the 21st is really cutting it close. If there's any delays and putting it all together and having town council review.
I agree.
It's very tight, Marlene, even for the 21st, from a paperwork standpoint.
If we go beyond that, we'll have to have it...
It will be tight. It will be very tight.
But I just don't think the Saturday after Thanksgiving is a viable day.
I'm going to have a conversation with Attorney Mullin, and I should have had it before this meeting. If we could draft an article that's sufficient for getting the warrant posted to meet the 14 days.
Oh, and then plug the...
And then the motion has the detail based on the survey, then maybe we can, we can move that up earlier.
I'm open to that.
So let me talk with Attorney Mullin tomorrow and see if we can post the warrant.
What other articles will be on there?
Right, well, there are other things. They can wait until, till May. I know the fire chief had spoke to the emergency apparatus equipment, but the finance committee had said that they could address that with the reserve fund.
I think, and I agree with what Joe has said in the past, Joe LaValle, our town moderator. I mean, we really need to, we have to do this easement.
We do.
One, because, because of the Mass Works grant, the project, et cetera, et cetera. Other than that, I think we have to, I know sometimes it's easier to do a little cleanup, but we ought to sort of in the back of our minds say, be under the thought of what, if we didn't have this town meeting, regardless of the easement, what would happen, right? I mean, we used, it used to be just in May, that was, everything had to wait till May. So unless something has to happen like the easements do, I would suggest, let's just wait till May.
Unless it's a safety issue, like the apparatus that Chief was talking about.
Of course, of course.
But you're saying there is a other funding mechanism for that.
Like to transfer some old bills. Even though it's a quickie, let's just wait.
No, that's, no way, because I think it's going to be asking a lot of people to go stand outside.
Right.
And listen to a bunch of property easements be read. And it could be snowy, I mean, honestly...
Just remind them, this is worth $2 million to the town.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's what this is about.
Yeah, you should be able to get 25 people there.
That we don't want to screw it up.
Yeah. So, so what else is on that list? Is there anything else on that list that you feel needs to be addressed? Okay. So, so how about this? How about a motion that we schedule it on the 21st or the 14th, depending on what Attorney Mullin says about the posting of the articles? And, but I would suggest an 11:00 AM? Do you have a preference?
Probably when the sun's sort of the highest, right?
Yeah, let's do 11. That gives people time to do things in the morning. And so, based on the advice of Attorney Mullin, one of those dates at 11:00 AM, and obviously check that with the moderator for his availability.
Then we can, we can make the final motion. Do you want something tonight, or do you want to wait, our next meeting's in two weeks, so it's not going to, well, should have all our ducks in a row by then.
Do you want to just do it next, next meeting, make the final motion to do this, instead of...
Or do you want it tonight?
Doing it tentatively?
It's up to you.
I would, I would like it if the board could do it tonight.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to set the town meeting date for November 21st at 11:00 AM.
Or the 14th, oh, okay, sorry.
Or, that's okay. Or the 14th, based on what Attorney Mullin's response is as far as preliminary verbiage to the easements, or the easements. Is that...
Lydia has... Right.
We know that.
We said 14. We said 14, yeah, we know that.
Ed seconded it.
It's drilled into my head.
Yeah, we were well aware, and we actually were discussing that. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're going to backtrack to our first item, which is our COVID update. We have Carrie, our COVID coordinator here, to just give us a general update. I think this is really helpful for townspeople. I know that the phone calls are great, but they only cover a little bit, so, shoot.
So we have, we have not had any new cases since the second week of August, maybe the first week of August. I really have to look at my notes, but it's been a while, thankfully. We're still at 22 cases, which is great, since March. So my weekly letter that I was doing, I kind of haven't been doing, because it's the same information that people are reading, but all, so it just, to me, didn't make sense to just keep putting it out there. So we obviously do our weekly phone call, which people do get, but if there was a new case, or there was new, any new information that needed to be passed on, then I would be posting a letter to the town website and Facebook and stuff like that for people to be reading. They, to touch base, because you guys discussed it already about business, like restaurants and things like that, I had been, I was contacted by a couple people who seemed to be frustrated, and rightly so, I can understand that, about why we have not allowed for the bars, especially in town, to be able to be open again, and we, we can't. Like, it's just, the governor, the state has given super strict guidelines of what's supposed to happen, and bars is like the last, one of the last things that are going to open up. And it says phase four, and that's what I have to stick with, and I, I can tell everybody that I am not happy about it. Like, I get it, because these people's business are not being able to run. But they're, my hands are tied. I can't change it.
If I may, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I just think it's important for people to know that Carrie and the people sitting at these desks and the COVID team and everybody, we do nothing, Carrie does nothing more than what is instructed of us, any of us, to do by the governor.
Right.
These aren't, these aren't local decisions to open or close or whatever. We're basically enforcing Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito's process for COVID. And so, and I'm with you. I totally understand, with no leeway. And I understand the frustration of these bar owners and the restaurants not being able to expand sooner, but they're, you know, we've got to follow, we've got to follow the rules.
Right.
Or we have to explain what the rules are, and everyone needs to follow the rules.
Exactly.
And that part of the reason, if you, if you think about what you opened with, we've only had 22 cases in Hatfield, and some of those were families. So, so you had two or three in maybe one little pod or one little pocket. 22 is too many, right? But it's the world we live in, so 22 out of, out of seven months is pretty remarkable, that our residents and our people that work here, who might not live here, but, you know, are all doing what we're supposed to do.
And we have a big population of seniors.
Yeah.
I am, I have to say, I mean, proud is probably not the right word to use, and whatever, I don't know, but for a town our size, and the population to be a quarter of our population as our seniors, knock on wood, and I hope I don't jinx us, but honestly, none of our cases have been senior citizens, not one.
Interesting.
Which is huge. Like, that's a big deal.
Wait, really? What do you consider a senior citizen? Over what?
We haven't had anybody over, I'm sorry, we had, I take that back, we had two, but they were in the same family. So, but, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, but still, to have, to have medical problems and stuff like that, to not have so many.
I actually think we had more than that.
Did we?
Yeah.
I, when thinking of names, I don't want to end up saying something I'm not supposed to. But I can tell you, the good chunk of it was, was younger, what I say, younger generation, so I say under the age of...
My age.
No, I say my age, and that, like, that age range. So a lot of them, a lot of them have been younger generation. They have not been, I would say, what I say, over 65 and older, which is what people were expecting. Like, that was, that's what the, that's what people have been looking at. It's like, that is the generation that is considered the highest risk, obviously, is over 70. And then you add in people who have medical conditions, et cetera. And, yes, I'm sorry, we, I misspoke. We did have a hand, like, I, not even five people, I would say, was over the age of 65, which I think is a really big deal.
Yeah.
It is.
So, but with that said, so I just wanted to point out that when it comes to the businesses, I wish we could just tell everybody, yep, open up, do what you got to do, but we can't.
Businesses, right? So the, we're at a point now where, you know, as I talk to people, the frustration level is growing among people and some of these restrictions. People are very upset about the restrictions surrounding the schools. And then sort of some of the things that, you know, like, so your kid can go play laser tag, but they can't go to school. Like, some of these things don't seem to make a lot of sense to people. So, but it is, Brian's right. It's what we have. It's the directives that we have to live under.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can only give the information to people. I can't force people's hands to be doing things that I think we should be doing. Since you brought up the schools, we can discuss the schools in a way that we've had. In the last three weeks, I've had to do a lot of research and investigating and contact tracing. We thankfully have had no cases. But we've taken, the nurses and myself have worked very hard with all the families who have children or even somebody in their home, that they've kept their children home for the safe being of everybody. People are following the rules to the best of their ability. And luckily, we have not had, it's cold season, it's allergy season. It's that time of year that kids all go back to school and everybody ends up with a little bit of something. And you take the fact that they were out of school for six months almost, like, they weren't around all those people and things like that. So the fact that we're almost four weeks in now or whatever, and we're, we have not, I mean, we're still doing good, knock on, knock on wood. And people are being responsible, and I think that's what it comes down to be. I mean, we, Hatfield has been responsible. We've taken every possible step to keep our staff and students safe in the buildings, more than even hospitals are doing. And I can't stress that to anybody more than I already have tried to. Like, the cleaning stuff that we have for both schools is more than what hospitals have for their own staff. So.
And I do, you touched on something that's important, and that's to credit our residents with really following the rules and heeding these warnings and doing the right thing. And that's really appreciated.
Yep.
And I think along those lines, we have spent a lot of time, effort, and finances on improving the air quality of the schools. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago, I think. Carrie continues to do an awesome job in coordinating all this and has really gotten pulled into many directions quite often. But she's right. All we can do is present the information as we know it, as the governor and Desi and others explain it. And then, you know, that has to go through the schools. I would also add to that, if we, if we as a community and as a school community continue to social distance and to wear the masks and to wash our hands, that will just help create a sense of calm for the children actually down the road in the near future, getting back into the classes more regularly than they are now with the hybrid. I mean, you know, everything's a stepping stone. And so if everybody continues with this stepping stone, doing what they're supposed to do, it's going to lead to the next piece, which is more children, more kids in school, you know. And then they're, that's just how the process has to work.
Yep, and we have, we have to get back to some type of normalcy. That's really what it's coming down to be. And we have, you know, that we, everybody knows we've made it known to the town. The town hall's not closed because of COVID. It's closed because of a different reason right now that we can't have the public inside. So when the time comes and that is fixed, the town hall will be back open. So it's not like we're closing, the town of Hatfield has no true reason to be closed for any reason. Be at the town offices, the fire department, the police department, the highway department, or the schools. And the governor has made that abundantly clear in the last week. Towns like ours, who have been in the gray for weeks, have been moved to phase three, step two, which means our numbers and gatherings can go up. You know, it's different things. He did not change the inside capacity in buildings, which I didn't expect him to, which it makes sense. And even he recently upped inside capacity for restaurants. So if all of that is happening, we as a town need to make it happen everywhere. I really truthfully believe. And it's a plan that has to start sooner than later when it comes to the school, I guess.
Right, and at least then people have the ability to choose if they want to go to these restaurants inside. Because you can sit at a bar now, right, with certain protocols and, yeah.
But you can still support the restaurants with takeout.
Of course. Yeah, right, exactly.
For the restaurant, you can still do it.
Yep, so.
And gift cards.
And gift cards.
Yep.
That's true. And we urge you to do that.
I don't, I honestly, do you have any other questions?
I don't, I.
Or any points that I didn't talk about or make?
I don't think so. I mean, just again, for everybody's edification, we have a meeting. It's myself representing Diana and Ed, Marlene and Carrie, and Chief Flaherty, and Chief DeKoschak. You know, we meet every week for updates and suggestions and, you know, what have you. And so we will continue to do that. We've been doing it probably since April, I think. We started after a couple of weeks that COVID wasn't going away real fast. Of course, we didn't think we'd still be here now at the time. We've been doing that and.
Because the only hot spot now was like UMass, right? That sort of, they got some issue at UMass.
Let me bring out, one part, one subject I didn't bring up tonight. It's actually after six, so the numbers have updated for the week. So I haven't gotten to look at them yet. That is my next step after leaving here. And we are having our weekly meeting that I have with the school in regards to the metrics system that they're using. For one thing, for everybody to understand how the metrics works, we look at a 14-day average. But so every week, obviously, those 14 days shift. And it's, so it would be last week's numbers and this week's coming numbers that are going to be coming out tonight. But for us to make a decision about school and if it's going to stay hybrid, are we going to let more kids in the building, are we going to go remote? It's based on a two-week trend, which is a big difference between a rolling average. And then we need a two-week trend of so many communities are in the yellow. So that means we are, we're going to, what we're calling is pause, and we're not going to allow any more children or staff or whatever into the building because we base our numbers off of how many people are physically actually coming to the building.
Just to interrupt, so, because what you're talking about is staff and students who attend from other communities.
Correct, and even our own community. So how I had broken it down is by Hampshire, Franklin, and Hampden County. And then each county has a list of towns. I know what percentage comes from each county, what percentage come, what percentage of students and staff come from each town, and then what percentage of that is our school population. It's a lot of numbers, and it took a lot of time to get it to figure out. However, it's great because now when I type in the numbers each week from every town, it calculates it for me because it's on an Excel sheet. So I don't have to fix all that stuff afterwards. I just pop in a couple of numbers and it's all done. So the way that we look at it is, is white and green, or gray and green, whatever you want, whichever color you want to use, means it's less than five cases, which is what Hatfield is. You should be doing, based on what Desi says, we should be doing in-person or possibly hybrid in-person, a little bit of both. Well, hybrid is in-person, but you know what I mean? Like, it's really, you should be more in-person, but you could be doing hybrid too.
Less remote, more in-person.
Right, so then yellow means we do hybrid. And if you get to a certain point of the percentage of the school population, which right now is 10%, if we go over that 10%, that means we cannot add more kids in. So if somebody who's already remote wants to tell the school, oh, I'd like my kid to go now to school the two days a week that they're going, they can't do that when we're in that pause phase. And then there's red, which means if we have multiple communities that, or a county, or Hatfield. So it's by Hatfield, one or two counties, or 10% of the school population, if you combine different towns. If they go over the red, then that means we actually have to be forced to go remote. So with that said, last week, though there is a town that was in the red, we were under the 10%. So this week, if there are any other towns that put us, that added together put us over the 10%, we still have to be two weeks, if you get what I'm saying, that trend has to happen, so.
It's not just a snapshot at that moment in time.
Correct, it's not just all of a sudden there's a town in the red.
It's a trend, it's a trend up or down. I mean, it's a trend.
And it really does change week by week.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these, the town that went in the red last week, they'd been way down in the yellow. They just had an influx of numbers. Whatever caused that, it did.
You could, right, like you're saying, you could have a whole family. And then, and that's enough to skew.
Exactly, so it's not just simple as saying, oh, you know, this town's red, we got to, we have to stop. And the fact is, is that there's a lot of, there's a lot of, I don't even know what the right word I'm looking for, but there's a lot of cards on the table basically at that point to have to play. And there's a lot of people that have to be considered. Because even when we go fully remote, you still have what the school calls priority students. And those kids need their one-on-one teaching. And you can't just say, here, go home and work remote.
Could I ask you a question about this?
Of course you can.
And, and I've been listening to it for six months, and I still sometimes can't wrap my head around it. I understand everything you just said. Let's just say that there's a community, a town, a city, whatever, that is in the red. Do we drill down to see? And I guess, so I'll just say there's 10 cases. 10 cases in a red, in a red community. Is that an automatic type of showstopper for us? Or do we then say, okay, of these 10, of these 10, yeah, ascending district, of these 10 families? Or do any of the kids that come to us from that community that has 10 cases? Does it matter that whether, if, like, if our kids don't, aren't part of those 10, we have a way of knowing that, right? And that shouldn't affect us?
Correct, because.
Is that, is that how everybody's interpreting that? All the staff?
Well, I don't know if that's how everybody's interpreting it. I've explained it that way, but it doesn't mean that people have actually listened to me. The way it works when you have a actual positive case is that, so let's just take Hatfield. We'll use us as.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
I get notified we have a positive case.
Yep.
My job is to then pick up the phone and call that individual and talk to them. And I have a three-page document that I have to fill out all the questions. In there, it's where have you been, who have you been in contact, all these people. A close contact is technically anybody under, that you spent time with under 15 minutes, under six feet.
Contact tracing you're doing.
And so I'm doing the contact tracing. Every town is doing that. So if you take a town like our town, just south of us, or whatever, next door to North Hampton. North Hampton has X amount of positive cases. Now, they actually haven't had any positive cases recently either, so that's good. But say they do. And whoever their positive case was in contact with either a family in Hatfield or a student who lives in North Hampton also that comes here, they have to contact me because that person gets listed down, and then that person gets shared to me through Maven, which is a system we use, so then I get notified. So if you're a contact to a person and you are truthfully what we call exposed, you get put into the system and it gets sent to your town to notify them. So in the case of any out-of-town student or staff that would end up positive, yes. If it's staff, absolutely, we would 100% be notified because you have to ask where their employer is so that their employer is notified. But two, with students, if it's, if it's, if they're considered a contact, it's going to say what school do they go to so that the school district is notified.
Sure.
So even if I understand this right, even beyond all of those moving pieces and all of that, the trends that you're watching, we have this added layer of protection of actual hard information, contact tracing information that would come to us about students or staff that could be exposed. So, I mean, that makes me feel better about moving forward with, you know, through the appropriate phases of getting our kids back in school.
Right, and it's not, and I have to make it abundantly clear, and I've tried for weeks now, this information is HIPAA-covered.
Right, of course, it should be.
No, and I'm not saying that to you, I'm just saying as a general statement, if I find out that a student or a staff member was exposed, it is, I can't, nobody can know about that. Like, we have to do our background, our due diligence to find out all the answers, but that doesn't get, it can't be.
Shared with everybody.
It shouldn't be shared.
Right.
And truthfully, families.
To the information that you use in your determination about.
Right, and then, then if it becomes a point that we need, that people of importance need to be notified, then we do the notification at that point. But I really can't stress enough to people that if you are a family that thinks they've been exposed, doing what you're supposed to to make sure that the people who need to know, know, is one thing. But having anybody else know about it is another because that's how the rumor tree starts. And that's how things get blown out of proportion. And I can be honest with you, it has happened in the last two weeks that I've dealt with more phone calls than I need to know about because people are getting third and fourth-hand information, and it's not true. And it makes it very difficult to try to address everything.
So, so I'm going to try to sum that particular.
Yeah, because, not that, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cut you short.
No, 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 I want to sum, I just want to say it again in a different way so that you can either say, yes, Brian, that's how it works, or no.
Okay.
So if we have a community in the red, another community in the red, and they send some of their children and some of their staff to Hatfield, if those children or staff have not been contract, contact traced to any of the people who are actually have COVID, then there's no need for our schools or community to be concerned about that.
Yes, that is my, yes.
You just can't say it's red, therefore we need to close or shut down or take a step back or go hybrid or go remote. Is, did I say that correctly?
That is true, but that is not how our school board and our school department wrote the policy.
Is, so that policy was written locally, but it's, it didn't Desi put out the guidelines?
Desi put out some guidelines, and then we, I mean, communities can add their own parts and.
But it makes no sense to me if other communities might be red or yellow.
Reevaluating, yes.
Yeah, if somebody else is red or yellow, not that we don't care, but if it doesn't affect us, we don't care, right? I mean.
But in our, I mean, are we not making sure that our policy that we've set is in line with other surrounding communities, particularly sending communities? I mean, I guess what's the basis, what's the basis for setting a policy that's so different from other communities?
The policy that was set, and I was just part of it as a COVID coordinator, so I didn't have any final vote or say in the policy, truthfully. I, my opinion was in there, but some parts are a little too. I don't even know what the word is I'm looking for, but.
Broad.
Broad, that's a perfect example. And truthfully, for our size community, I personally feel that we could extend our percentage of school population to be more than what we, what it was set at. But it was set at that based on following other districts and their policies. So we did review many districts when we were doing this research at the beginning.
Sure.
But now that we've implemented this, now we, now you look at it and you see how simple it can kind of get you to that percentage, and you realize, well, it's not, 10% isn't a hu, doesn't end up being a large number of people out of the overall population of the school district, if you know, if that makes sense. So it's like we're making these drastic decisions for what could be considered a small amount of people.
So maybe, because this is, this is complicated.
It's very complicated.
And I can tell you, you know, this is on a lot of people's minds, even people who don't have kids in school. I'm hearing it constantly from people. So, and I know that there's a lot of people attending school committee meetings online. I've attended some myself, not, certainly not all. But maybe it makes sense to see if we could have somebody from the school department come into maybe our next meeting to speak to that policy. And because I think that some of the people who watch select board meetings are different than people that watch school committee meetings. And it would just be a way to inform more of the community what is happening with our school system because we all have a vested interest in it, whether we have kids there or not. And I do think that this would be a really important piece of information to get out. And I'd be curious to know how that decision was made and why our policy is inconsistent with other communities.
It's, I have to say, it's not consist, it's not that it's not consistent. Because if you look like at our policy versus Frontier, a lot of things are the same. But Frontier's, the amount of people they have in their district is three times the amount of people that we have. We have 503 people.
Higher percentage of choice, right? Probably, maybe, not necessarily.
So out of Hampden County, percentage of choice is, and staff is 11. So, out of Hampden County, percentage of choice is, and staff is 11, is 12.6. Franklin County is 11%. And Hampshire County makes up 76% of our school population.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, yes, school choice does make up a large part of our population, but Hampshire County makes up the most of it. Which is another thing to be looking at too.
I personally think getting, you know.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you.
So, just as an explanation for what's, you know, sort of an informational thing.
I mean, I know at the school committee meeting last night, they did discuss that they want, that, like, they're trying their best as a moving forward plan as they want to get more kids into the building. But for that to happen, some things have to change based on what they've already voted on. Because we can't put more kids in the building at six-foot distancing, which is what they had voted on originally.
I think it's been, I think it's been challenging. I know it's been challenging.
Of course it has.
For administration and the school committee.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we get it. And Diana's right, though. We, we also hear the other side of it from, from residents with or without children. And, and that's why we're kind of asking you, we're not trying to overstep our bounds on the school committee or the administration or anything, but Diana is absolutely right. Some people watch us, some people watch the other, and some watch both. But I, I thought it was important, and so thank you for being here. I thought it was important to try to explain that whole, the metrics and the red and the yellow. And for all of us sitting here, as well as the people at home, just to understand that just because a community's red, doesn't mean that should necessarily affect us if our kids or staff have nothing to do with that. And, and my understanding is that's not currently how the policy is in Hatfield. And maybe that can be looked at.
Right.
Because it was all unknown, I get it. Everybody was trying to protect the health and welfare of our students and our staff, rightfully so, by the way.
It really was unknown and you had to make a plan. And Desi's like, oh, we're here right now, you know.
How does we go?
Sometimes, yeah, things change.
I comment it from a perspective that I feel like our role has been, we've all had different roles, but to sort of oversee the response. And now it's also important to oversee the recovery.
Right.
And, you know, we're talking about how we assist our businesses and, you know, these other things. And I think that this, it's, it's all part of this larger picture of our recovery.
Correct.
And I, so, I, I just, I, I don't know. I, I think it would be good to have some school representatives and to, to just sort of let people know. Because again, I do think we have different people that watch the meetings.
I think we could ask Marlene, if she doesn't mind, to reach out to, maybe Marty and a school committee member or two could be here.
So our policy, our medical policy one, or I don't even know what they're calling the title of it, is Becca Williams, Becca Bench and Jill Robinson, Marty and myself.
Oh, okay.
So just.
Any of them would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Any or all?
That would be really great, too.
In-person would be.
In-person would be ideal because I think it's a lot easier for, for the camera to just, to get that and to, you know, and I, people are watching. I mean, I, you know, I get feedback all the time about our meeting. So, just a thought, and I appreciate the update. Ed, did you have any questions for Carrie?
We can beat this to, I mean, we've been beating this up. And, and I agree with you, get the school person here or whatever, and, and they can explain.
Just as an informational, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a, just a dialogue. It's not, just so they're aware, this isn't a what the heck's going on type thing. It's kind of a, hey, what's going on?
Right.
You know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because people really don't understand some of it.
Can get confusing as, as to the reasons why you're in certain phases, this whole metrics thing.
And keeping my column has been very hard, but yes.
So, I'm all set with, with Carrie, are you?
No, just thank you for everything you've been doing. Thank you.
I get to go meet with the school at seven, so.
Oh, tell them we said hi.
You very much, Carrie.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, do we have to do anything with this EMT appointment?
Just sign, you don't have to do anything at this meeting.
Oh, so it's EMT, so I can sign, right?
It's just signing, you're not voting anything, you're just signing off on the attachment.
So I guess that's it. Marlene, did you have anything else?
I do not have anything.
We, I didn't ask if there were any announcements at the beginning. I forgot about that. Did you have anything?
I thought you were going to say something about the tractor parade.
Oh, that, I, you know, the tractor parade really was terrific. It was really, really fun. Lot of participants. I don't know what the number was, but it seemed like well over 50 tractors. And of course, tickets are on sale for the drive-in concert that happens this weekend. And I think the weather's supposed to be nice. And, you know, it's, it's going to be a very safe event in how it's being laid out. There, there are some, you know, protocols people are going to have to follow, but I have every confidence that people will do that and it'll be a nice night.
And you have the, this Saturday is, for those that want to attend, the trailer trash, right on the 10th?
That's what I was just talking about. Yep, yep. So, so that's, you know, a little something, right? A little something to do. So, and a, and a big, big thank you, as usual, to Bob Betzel, Anna Holehut. I'm probably going to forget some of the folks involved with the tractor parade, but Bobby Volinger, I think Donald Volinger, Anna Holehut, Robin Volinger, they, they organized it. And it was really, it was really fun. I, I enjoyed it. It was really, really nice. Really great pictures I saw on different people's social media. And just great.
It's great living on the parade route.
It was a beautiful day. It was, yeah. It was a nice, long route through town. And some people, we had somebody come park next to us who said, I already watched it once, but it was so great. I quickly got over here so I could watch it come back again. So it was really, it was fun.
I did have one thing.
Good time, yes.
So, just so people are aware, there is no homecoming this year because there's no fall sports. So there won't, there isn't a homecoming. That's been officially announced. I just wanted, in case people were wondering, normally it's the weekend after Columbus Day, I believe. But, so we'll, I guess they'll maybe do it in the spring. Well, hopefully, if, if things have changed. But I, again, I just, I had gotten an email from the principal at Smith Academy. So I just thought I'd relay that information.